We'll start today's meeting with an invocation offered by Councilmember Scott Barr. Please rise.
Laura, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight as a council, as a community. As we enter a new year, we know you are the one that makes all things new. We pray as we would enter a new council term that you would give each of us wisdom in our decision-making, grace in our interactions with one another, and that you would help us to continue to serve our community with humility, vision, and excellence. We pray also for all those just as we continue to struggle with COVID-19, pray for those that are struggling with that, and for just us as a society and around the world that we could be relieved of that and that those who are struggling could be feeling better soon. Just give us your grace tonight and throughout the coming year. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Okay. Good evening, Livonia. Welcome to the January 5th, 2022 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,936th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting and will take place on Wednesday, January 19th of 2022. We will note Councilmember Vice President Laura Toye is absent tonight. She's unfortunately not able to be here. We have no special groups in the audience tonight. In terms of council presidential announcements, we have new data on item number five, and we, as a council, would like to wish a happy birthday to our city assessor, Linda Goslin, whose birthday is on January 15th. Normally, we would be going to council announcements and council communication at this point, but in terms of a change for efficiency, we will first be going to public comments. During the period of public communication, which will last 30 minutes, council will not be speaking or interacting with the public comments. Councilmembers will be taking notes and will address any concerns they wish to add a statement to during council announcements and council communication. With that being said, we will open up public communication. If you have anything to state to the council, please approach one of the podiums on the left or right side of the room. This period will last 30 minutes. And it appears that nobody is approaching. Actually, it looks like Mayor Brosnan is here in the audience, and she is approaching the podium at this time.
All right. Good evening, council, and Happy New Year to all of you and to all of our Livonia residents. I wanted to take a moment just to stop by this evening because this was your first meeting of 2022, and we do have a new face here and a couple of new people in different seats on the council, so I wanted to stop by and wish you all the very best. Also to share with you some of the things that are going on in the community right now as they relate to COVID. As Councilman Barr mentioned during his prayer, these are challenging times for our community, and we continue to contend with this global pandemic that seems like it is just never going to end. So in the wake of high numbers of COVID cases in both the city of Livonia throughout Wayne County, we are experiencing some of the highest numbers that we've seen throughout the pandemic. The city decided that it is best to make sure that we take steps to protect our workforce. So along with the work of our fire chief, David Hevner, who's here this evening, and Brian Kahn, our emergency manager, as well as all of the department heads, we came together and put together what we've called Safe Start 2022. Safe Start 2022 is designed to be an intermediate step, hopefully something that's very temporary, designed to protect our workforce. We have now a workforce that is once again being propelled into a frontline situation where they're really in a vulnerable position. So starting on Monday, January the 3rd, through Saturday, January 22nd, the city of Livonia is requiring that masks be worn in all of our public buildings for people regardless of their vaccination status. And we're going to continue to look at our COVID numbers throughout that time period and reassess things as we get closer to January of 2022, or January 22nd. The idea is, is that coming out of the holiday season, there was going to be this 14-day spike in COVID cases. So this is our chance, this is our opportunity, to protect our workforce against a COVID spike and to make sure that we keep a workforce in place, quite frankly, so that we're able to continue to provide the level of service that Livonia residents want. So in addition to the masks, we are asking that department heads implement remote work once again, that they work with limited staffing, as limited as they possibly can, or staggered shifts. And they're going to do this to the extent possible that we continue to maintain all of our services, but once again, we're just kind of rolling it back to that stage where we were back to remote work and we were doing the staggered shifts. We are maintaining social distancing with all of our city employees. You this evening are experiencing the screens back up once again between your work areas. That's happening throughout City Hall. A lot of the plastic screening is going back up. We're limiting gatherings and events and meetings during this time to account for that six-foot social distancing. This means that we're going back to the Zoom platform for a lot of our meetings, so you know, we're once again hear a lot of that. You're on mute. We're limiting our gatherings, not just inside City Hall here, but throughout the city in many of our other buildings, our senior facilities and everywhere. We're putting up new signs because we think that people get used to the old ones and it becomes mundane, and the fact of the matter is, the crisis is at a little bit different stake right now. So there's some fresh signage that's going up. We're also providing masks and thermometers and the protective screening again that you're all experiencing tonight. We're encouraging all of our employees, if they feel sick, to stay home, and that is really, really hard with this workforce of 635 people. These are people that are used to playing hurt, and when they don't feel well, they plow through, but we're really being diligent about asking people to stay home. And then in addition to that, we're trying really hard to provide COVID testing for employees who do feel like they maybe have been susceptible to the virus. All employees had an opportunity to be screened, for example, before they came back to work. So with all of those elements in place, we think that we're going to be one of the safer cities in this area. Following what Livonia did, we've seen another, a number of cities come online doing the very same thing. So we know that we are a little bit ahead of the curve, and we're just trying really hard to stay ahead of COVID. So we want to thank you for your support as we continue to try to step up to the challenges of COVID-19. I also want to take this opportunity to welcome Council President Jim Jolly to his new role. This is an exciting time, and I know that before this meeting, you had a chance to meet as a council committee of the whole and determine some of the leadership positions within the council, and I'm just really excited about all of the opportunities that that provides for our city. Jim and I have had a chance to talk informally about some of his ideas, some of my ideas, to really begin to open up those lines of communication so that we're able to move forward with a really good agenda come 2022. I also want to congratulate Vice President Toye. I know she's not here this evening in her return to a leadership position on the council. This is an exciting time, and I've had a chance to talk to her a little bit too about projects that she'd like to see move forward and that the mayor's office would like to advance as well. And finally, a warm welcome to our new council member, Scott Morgan. Scott, with his 20-plus-year career in law enforcement, reinforces everything that Livonia stands for in terms of its support of its first responders. Whether it's the mayor's office, the council, or this community, we stand strongly behind our first responders. Having Scott as a member of the council clearly reflects that with an added level of support. I had a chance to talk with him earlier this week too about some of the plans that we have coming forward. I am really excited in general to work with all of you on so many exciting opportunities that we have in our future this year, and just the chance to begin that dialogue and to begin that work with all of you is one of the bright spots in 2022. So good luck to all of us this year, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year. Okay, so tonight we are joined by many department heads here at City Hall, a lot of whom are sitting in the audience. I'm sure at some point they will approach the podium and introduce themselves at that time. Up here on the dais, we are joined by City Attorney Paul Bernier, government, Director of Government Affairs, LaShawn Thomas, City Clerk Susan Nash, Council Office Manager Sarah Kasparitz from the Planning and Economic Development Office, Scott Miller, and City Engineer Todd Zalinsick. I would also like to welcome Mr. Morgan as our new member here. It's, I've had an opportunity to know Scott for approximately 15 years, and I think he's going to be a great addition as well. With that being said, we had no audience communication. I'll go to the council. Does anybody on council have anything to offer at this time? Mr. Barr?
Just two things. I'll add my welcome to Scott Morgan, and great to have you here, Scott. Second thing is, I'd actually meant to say this at one of our December meetings and forgot to, but after all the attention that was given about five or six months ago to the problems with trash pickup, I think it's only appropriate that we acknowledge that it seems to have improved or maybe been resolved. The frequent calls I was getting about problems with trash pickup have stopped. I don't think I've gotten any over the last month and a half to two months. My personal experience definitely reflects that, and I've actually, in December, talked to Sam Caremagnow, our GFL representative, about it, and they feel that they really have that under control. So I know that there was a lot of effort to resolve that situation, and I think it's worth just acknowledging that hard work and thanking GFL and the service that they're providing to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, my brother, happy 25th birthday. I know he's excited to get halfway to 30, so happy birthday, Tony. And then also, you know, welcome to Mr. Morgan and to our council president and council vice president, and then also anybody that helped me, friends and family. This is our first meeting of my second term, and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to serve this term. So thank you again, and thanks to all my colleagues as well. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman McIntyre? Thank you. First of all, congratulations, President Jolly. It's awfully nice to have you sitting in that middle seat, and congratulations and looking forward to your leadership, and you've already made an impact before even the first meeting, so thank you. Congratulations to our Vice President Laura Toye, and we wish her a feeling better soon, and welcome to our new colleague, Mr. Morgan. Nice to see you here. And in addition, I just wanted to wish my son, David, my older son David, a very happy 24th birthday today. Fortunately, his birthday gift was a positive COVID test. Not the way he wanted to be celebrating, but he arrived two weeks late, and we realized from that that he would do everything on his own timeframe, but wish him a very happy birthday. And another happy birthday to one of our zoning board, zoning board of appeals members, Mr. Joel Turbiak, whose birthday is today, and yesterday celebrated the arrival of his fourth child, a daughter after three sons. So happy birthday to Joel, and thanks for your service to our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you for everyone who assisted me and who supported me during my campaign, and I'm very happy to be here, and you will not be disappointed. And I also want to thank the council, the support from the council, and all my friends out there. So thank you very much. It's a laundry list, so I'm not going to get into that, but I did need to give a shout out. Thank you.
Seeing no other communication from the council here, we will get started with the agenda. Tonight is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken tonight, but council members may offer a resolution or a series of resolutions that will be placed on the next regular study meeting, excuse me, the regular meeting, which would be a voting meeting. Some of these items will be offered for a consent, meaning that they are non-controversial in nature, and will be voted on as one item at that next meeting. If anybody is here who would like to make a comment or address the council during any one of these items, if you are the presenter, you are able to approach the podium and speak at length in regards to the topic. If you would like to make a public comment in regards to the item at hand, you are limited to two minutes. When anybody approaches the podium for comments, whether you are the petitioner or an audience member wishing to make comments, I'd ask that you please state your name and contact information via address or email address for the record so that we can contact you appropriately. One of the changes we've made is Ms. Kasparitz from the council office will be taking notes of any of the comments made during public comments. That does not extend to the substance of the meeting and the items at hand, but council will be taking note in general and will follow up appropriately as we see fit. With that being said, we will start with new business. Item number one, waiver petition, coming to us from the Planning Commission. This is petition 2021-10-02-22, submitted by Century 21 Row, requesting to construct and operate a vehicle tow yard for accelerated towing and recovering, recovery at 34437 Rosati Avenue located in the west, on the west side of Stark Road just south of the CSX Railroad in the southwest quarter of Section 28. Notification to attend was sent to Terry Sever from Century 21 Row. We'd ask the petitioner to approach the podium. Sir, your name and address?
My name is Terry Sever. Can I take a mask off, or do I need to leave it on?
While you're addressing us, you can take it off if you'd like.
Terry Sever, 37152 Six Mile Road, Century 21 Office. I'm a realtor, and I was involved in bringing about the sale of some property, this property, and so I am a representative, I'm representing both the owner and the prospective buyer. I've read through all the information, I've read through the report from the Planning Commission, and we really have no objections to their recommendation. There's only one item that I really would like to address, and it might be my fault because in reading the engineer's report, it referred to a project, it referred to storm retention, a few other things. And as I asked earlier, I assume that you received, or in your package, you have the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if I could, I would like to just address, obviously, we all know, based on my experience at the local government level, that action taken by the council is final and basically remains law per se. Back in 2005, I think it was late December, the owner of this property received site plan approval for this project. He had assembled a number of parcels. Upon getting that approval and submitting a additional document showing the setbacks and building envelopes like you normally would get from any development developer, and this has been at the engineering office for the last 15, 16 years. When the owner got the approvals, he went ahead and built two buildings. And that was the only development that occurred, the buildings that were built on these lots, which are individual lots, retention pond, sewers were built, the road was built, all the utilities.
If you don't mind, there might be a better way to go about this, and I appreciate it. Maybe this is my fault. Mr. Miller, can you give us a presentation in regards to what exactly is at hand here? And then it might be a more appropriate time, once we have a little bit more of that background information, for you to go into what you want to discuss.
Yeah, I was only going to take probably another five minutes and offer some documents, but okay.
Let's go to Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, and then we'll welcome you back up there, and it might help you to...
Yeah, he might have some display a little better for me, right? Okay. Rosati Industrial Park was officially recorded in 2006. It consists of 15 lots. The entire sub is zoned M1 light manufacturing. The subject site is Lot 8 of the subdivision. It is located at the end of the cul-de-sac of Rosati Avenue. The land area of the property is 31,000 square feet, or roughly seven-tenth of an acre. The front property line measures about 136 feet in frontage along the cul-de-sac by an average depth of 165 feet. Lot, well, I should go back here. Lot 8 is surrounded completely by industrial zoned properties. The closest residential district is located approximately 156 feet to the south, as you can see on the zoning map. Part of the requirements of Section 6.58, vehicle tow yards are restricted to M1 and M2 zoning districts and are treated as waiver use approvals. Except for the front yard setback, lot area are required to be entirely enclosed by a fence. The site plan shows that the building would be 5,800 square feet and is located near the front of the site. The parking lot area is entirely fenced in, and this, the parking lot area is behind the building and to the north. Parking required is based on one parking spot for per each 500 square feet of building area. Therefore, this building would require 12 parking spaces available to employees and customers. The facility would have five employees. The site plan shows 31 parking spaces that would be available to employees, customers, tow trucks, and recovered vehicles. As specified in the requirements for waiver use approval, the entire lot would be completely enclosed by a six-foot-high chain fence, and then the access gate to the rear area is at the northeast corner of the building and would be a six-foot-high wrought iron fenced, type fencing. The building would be constructed out of a combination brick and split-faced block. Windows would be installed on the front and portions of the side elevation. The rear and nor, the rear and north side of the buildings would contain overhead doors. The building height would be 22 feet. The floor plan shows a very open floor plan. You have a large shop area and office, vehicle prep room and restrooms. The site plan does show a dumpster area at the west side of the parking lot that would be enclosed by six-foot-high walls and have corrugated aluminum solid gates. For site lighting, the elevation plans show that there would be LED light packs along the top of the building. The site would not have any light poles in the parking lot. For landscaping, it would consist of four deadwood trees along the front of the building. You would have a row of arbor variety in front of the building and then grass. For signage, the site would be allowed one sign based on two linear foot of the building frontage or 100 square feet, whatever is lesser, and that's the extent of the proposal.
So, Mr. Miller, the waiver petition is specifically for the usage?
Yes.
For this purpose? Is that correct? Okay. Sir, if you'd join us at the podium again, would you like to add further explanation to...
Yeah, I know. Everybody has a little better picture of what's going on here.
Right.
Also, I want to just comment that this is an ideal spot for this use since it's at the end of a very secluded road off of the main street, no residents drive by or anything. But anyway, in talking to different people at the city and stuff, I haven't talked to one person and followed through. We went to the engineering department when this first came up, and at that, I was able to obtain a site plan that was approved by the city council and a additional document that was the working document shown here, which is documented all of the setback, side yard, front yard. And this is the blueprint that we've been working with to build buildings. Mr. Rosati, who originally started this project, and I think it was in 2006 or '07, he built two buildings. I don't, I don't know if you had. Did you have pictures of the road?
So at this point, typically, site plans expire if they're not acted on?
Well, but I'm saying it is. He built the road, he built the sewer, he built the utilities.
But there would be an individual site plan for this particular parcel. Is the site plan that Mr. Miller presented here, is that what you wish to proceed on tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So if that's the case, to what extent does this information that you're presenting, what does that change?
Well, what I'm, what I'm indicating is that they may reference, they may have to have a variance, and based on the site plan that was approved by the city council years ago and has been acted on in terms of, we don't want to have buildings setback at different spaces.
Okay.
And to change an ordinance or affect an ordinance and have it retroactive 15 years later or something isn't, isn't reasonable either. So anyway, what I'm asking is that you consider, in the language for two, reference that it be referred to the engineering department for their review to see that it conforms to the plan that the engineering... We've already gotten two additional approvals for a site plan with the setbacks according to these documents that are at the engineering department.
I think I understand you now, and I think we do as well. Mr. Barr?
Yeah, through the chair to Paul Bernier from Law, is the fact that we've recently adopted a new zoning ordinance for the city, does that change at all what's required? Is that the only reason why this item number two is in here saying they may have to go to the ZBA, or would that have had been the same even if we hadn't passed a new zoning ordinance?
I believe it would have been the same anyways because we still have to go to the ZBA if it doesn't meet the requirements of the setback. Only the ZBA could give them the variance on that.
So, okay, and that's what I assumed. I wanted to confirm that regardless of what we do here tonight with number two, I think you'll have to go to ZBA. I mean, I don't, I don't think we can keep that from happening.
It may have to go to ZBA depending on what the engineer department looks at on the plan.
So, I mean, I think the case that you're making, it sounds, it sounds, I understand the logic of what you're saying, but I think that's the case that you need to make to ZBA. I'm not sure it has any bearing on what we're looking at here tonight.
If we have to, we will, but I'm appealing to the legal department or interpretation. My knowledge is that an ordinance can't be retroactive to something that's already been done, and you have subdivisions that are built, and then you got different setbacks and designs and stuff.
I, I understand that. The, the condition that the planning commission included here says, "subject to a determination by the inspection department," so that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Is you have to go through that process?
Exactly, right.
Makes total sense to me. I...
And they have been doing that. They've approved two, two additional lots. We built a third building last year, so they're following this, these documents now.
So you probably have a strong case, yeah. So I think, I'll just say, having reviewed the planning commission minutes and looked through their proceedings, looking at the plan, I'm willing to offer approving on this for consent if there's no objection. There may be more questions, but no, I'll put that out there.
Any questions from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
I'm, I'm now confused by the question that Mr. Barr asked and was answered. I thought I read that the only deficiency in the setback was caused by something not being carried over to the new zoning ordinance.
Yes, I think so. I think that was the issue, and my point is that it can't be, go into effect after the fact.
Well, I mean, it, it could, that would be another issue, but, but this goes to... Scott, am I misunderstanding what you asked?
What, the conclusion that I came to Councilwoman McIntyre is, or Councilwoman McIntyre, sorry, is I think that the issue he's speaking to, I think, is outside of what we're being asked to approve tonight. We have a, we have a waiver that is before us to consider, and let's presume that we approve this. There's going to be, our inspection department's going to look to see if he needs to go to ZBA. Regardless of what language we include in here tonight, that's going to happen.
Let me just add one more comment.
Well, hold on, sir. I'll...
Okay.
And I'm sorry, maybe I'm just missing this. When I read, when I read the notes, the current, with looking at this under the new zoning ordinance, the deficient setback is caused as a result of us not carrying over inadvertently the correct or the pre, the setback requirements existed under the previous zoning ordinance for M1. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think I understand, I understand where you're coming from here.
Thank you.
So different boards, councils, ZBA, we have different authorities and different things that we're able to approve and to grant and to review. The engineering department will review as is indicated, and if they find that it is necessary to go to the zoning board of appeals, they'll have to do that. Do you understand? I understand what you're telling us.
Right.
And, you know, well, fortunately or unfortunately, ordinances and laws tend to be fluid in nature sometimes where they do have the chance and the opportunity to be changed, and this is a circumstance in which that, that may have affected the overall site proposal here.
The reason I'm raising this is, I spent 14 years on the city council in Fronton Hills and was mayor, county commissioner, all that stuff, and I've never seen where a new ordinance would be retroactive in effect, work that the city council has already approved as law. And on top of that, what appears to be in the communications that are written, the person, the person we've been dealing with, Randy, at the counter and has approved... person, the person we've been dealing with, Randy, at the counter and has approved additional development buildings, okay? It's not a development project. Each lot is in itself and has been approved. We're getting those approvals, but whoever wrote the letter does not seem to be aware of that, and I wanted to make sure that, I don't mind that the engineering department should inspect and make sure that it meets the plans that the city has on file. So, I appreciate that, and that's, I'm only trying to get this cleared up so that we don't keep going to, getting a different answer from a different person in a different department, so.
So, Mr. Miller, I take it you understand what he's saying, correct?
Yeah.
Can you provide additional information to the council? And if need be, we'll pull this off the consent agenda, but as of right now, you do have an approving on the consent agenda.
Well, we'll, we'll take what you, whatever you decide. We're, we're not going to dispute it. If we do, we'll go to the ZBA, but like you said, I, I've been, I've been there and I, I've never seen where it's been retroactive fifteen years, so.
We'll, we'll look into it, and if we find something different, we'll kind of go.
That's fine. We'll take whatever, the consent agenda is fine.
Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Miller or to Mr. Bernier, is there a ordinance that states how long vehicles can sit in a parking lot, the recovered vehicles? Is it twenty-four hours? Can they be there permanently?
Not that we know, no. I mean, that's why we asked him. He says, I mean, basically, the owner said they'd keep them maybe six months.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to the petitioner, part of the document said, it, it showed a hundred and twenty days for a procedure for, for removing the car or having it moved on from the site, correct?
Yes.
Who, is that your, is that, would that be the owner's policy or is that a law that's in place?
I, I can have the owner speak to that, but I think what, what he has indicated is that he doesn't do abandoned vehicles. The majority of his business is, he picks vehicles up on the side of the street, takes them to wherever they need to go, insurance company, repair shop or whatever. He's not, he doesn't store the same vehicle for a length of time. He processes, he does private insurance work, stuff like that. He's not.
The other question that I do have, and I, maybe you can answer it, if not, it might be the, the owner. I'm noticing that part of the, the backup did say that you have multiple locations, you're leasing a, at a dealership locally, and I think there was two other places. If this goes up, do any of those go away or is this business growing and thriving? You know, I'm just trying to figure that out.
I'll let him.
Thank you.
I, I think I know the answer, but I, I'll let him.
Please state your name.
Michael Fields.
Address, please.
One four three one zero, twenty-one and a half mile road, Marshall, Michigan.
Okay.
So, the, the question that I had is, obviously, looking through the packet and the background information, you guys have multiple sites in the area.
Correct.
If this gets approved, do you have any, are you keeping those or is this, you know, an expansion of your business?
No, actually, we want to consolidate to have one home-based location, and that's what we plan on doing here in Livonia.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask for this to be on the regular?
Yes, with that request, this item will be on the regular agenda, meaning that you will have to be present at the regular meeting in case there's any additional questions. Hopefully, we'll have the answers, if possible, by the next meeting as well for you. I'll call for any kind of public comments or audience communication on this item. It appears that there is none, so this will be on the regular agenda on January nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two. You're all set to go on this item? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, Chris.
Calling item number two, request to extend a contract with Livonia Towing from the Division of Police on a month-to-month basis to allow time to prepare and complete a competitive bidding process for these services. This is Council Resolution one six one dash twenty-one. Chief?
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Council members. Congratulate from me too, to you guys for your putting in the new council. Congratulations on being president and congratulations to joining the council, Mr. Morgan. Looking forward to working with the new council in the new year. So, we are requesting a contract extension with Livonia Towing on a month-to-month basis. As you know, the current contract is going to expire at the end of January of this year, and we are currently in the competitive bid process for a new contract, which we expect to be awarded hopefully by June, so that's why we'd like the month-to-month contract. And Livonia Towing has agreed to extend the current contract under the same conditions on a month-to-month basis. And as you know, Livonia Towing has been providing excellent service for the city of Livonia for the fire and police department for well over forty years. They're quick to respond to our crashes, our cleanups, and I'm sure they'll continue to do that. In addition, the fees for these services will continue to be paid from budgeted funds, and the fees will not change during the month-to-month contract. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Any questions from council? Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, are Livonia Towing, are they in the process with, with future contracts or are they now no longer going to be seeking the competitive bidding process with us?
I believe they are going to be seeking a bid with us.
Okay. With that being said, I'd like to offer an approving. I'll consent if there's no objection.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
No objection, but I was just wondering why, it says to allow time to prepare and complete a competitive bidding process. It's not like this caught us by surprise, I don't think. Why, why have we not prepared for this in order to do the bidding process?
That's a good question, Councilman. It's to help increase the competitiveness of the bid process to hopefully get more tow companies involved. One of the requirements of getting the contract is they have to have a tow yard in the city, and that can take time if they're interested. So, this, we believe, the bid process we have going on with finance, with a pre-bid meeting, and giving these companies time to put together a good package, we'll get the best possible contract for towing services in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other comment from the council, is there any audience communication on this item? Seeing none, you have a approving motion for consent on the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, request to approve location and schedule of dates and times for the twenty twenty twenty-two Board of Review meetings as well as compensation rates for members from the Department of Assessment per the requirements of the State of Michigan Statute MCL two one one point three zero.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Council President Jolly. My name is Chris Bogus. For those of you who don't know me, I'm here representing the Assessment Department and Lynda Gosson, the assessor. I am the commercial and industrial appraiser for the department. At this time of the year, every year, we come to you to request the approval for the two thousand twenty-two March Board of Review dates and times as well as the compensation for the Board of Review members. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I take it you're asking for an approval, correct?
That is correct.
Council, any comments or motions? Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is your first time presenting before council, huh?
That is right, sir.
Well, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer approving or consent if there's no objection.
Any objection, comments from council, any audience communication? Seeing none, you have a, an approval for the consent agenda on the January nineteenth meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. Hopefully, this isn't a punishment.
Yeah, it's either shortest straw or next man up, so.
Well, we'll, we'll see what happens next time, right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, request to approve salary and fringe benefit adjustments for the classification of fire chief and deputy fire chief from the Department of Civil Service for the period of December one, two thousand twenty-one through, through November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Mayor?
Happy New Year, council. Congratulations to everyone. It's very nice to see everyone again.
I was going to say, I thought you left three meetings ago.
I'm telling you, it's happening. It's going to happen, you'll see. I know, I keep threatening. I come to you this evening as a result of approval by our commission, Civil Service Commission. Historically, the salary and benefit changes that are negotiated between the city and the unions are passed on to the chief, in this case, fire chief and deputy fire chief classifications. And you have before you in our letter what those changes are and what would actually apply. It would be same salary increases that, that the union and the, and the members received, and increase in personal business time, and increase in maximum annual reimbursement for classes, increase, it sounds like all increases, but there were other things. There were operational things that we also negotiated during the contract, as you know. And we also want to include that if there is a successor fire chief or deputy fire chief that is selected from the union ranks, that they will have all of the benefits of the current CBA extended to them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any comments or motions from council? Ms. McIntyre?
I, I have a question. Thank you. It's nice to continue to see you, long after we thought we would, but it's nice.
Thank you.
Denise, are these, and I meant to look this up before the meeting, and I didn't. Does this make the fire chief salaries commence or the police chief?
That's a good question.
These increases?
That's a very good question. I don't believe so, but I don't know for sure. The fire chief would probably know. Are they the same, chief, ever?
I honestly don't know what the police chief's favorite is.
Okay, well.
It's a little awkward.
We have them both here this evening, but.
The police chief's sitting right there.
Right, they both are. I honestly don't know.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to, I'm happy to offer an approving resolution. I'd like this on the regular. Part of what, and I think we've, we expressed this before, we're trying to do is look at all of the salaries kind of, you know, holistically and take a large view of what the department had compensation looks like, understanding that the situation of the, the, the union increase passing along to the fire chief. But I would like, before the next meeting, to see the, the police chief compensation and the deputy chief, and also to understand what the car policies are for both the fire chief, the deputy chief, and on the police department. You know, are, are they, do they get cars? You know, what, are there limitations? And it's just to look at, again, where we are from the overall perspective. But I, I, I am happy to offer compensation or.
An approval?
Thank you, a resolution, an approving resolution.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
Just clarification, when we talk about Kylie, Kathleen McIntyre, are we talking about department heads in general and the vehicle policy? I know that's been a topic, and, and I, I'm still unclear on that process.
I, I just, what, what I'm asking for, if I may, Mr. Jolly?
Yes.
What, what I'm asking for, for, for the purposes of this is just comparison to the police department. And specifically to the chief, the deputy chief, and then what the vehicle, the vehicle policies are for fire and police, for chief and deputy chief.
Do you understand that, Ms. Mayor?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? It appears there are none. Any audience communication? There appears to be none. You have an approving motion for the regular agenda on, on January nineteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Number five, while you're sticking, sticking up here, I guess. Number five, request to approve an increase in compensation for the Director of Housing from the Livonia Housing Commission to align the compensation range as other housing directors in comparative communities. I'll note that there was new data received on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two in regards to this item. Ms. Mayor?
Yes, I come before you representing the Livonia Housing Commission, again, requesting a salary adjustment classification for the position of housing director. You may, I'm sure you remember that last month, I was also here for two other positions, and this was actually part of that same request, but we were waiting on the Housing Commission's approval to move it forward to you. You have the information in front of you. The, the request or the, the proposed new salary does line up with the HR director's new salary range that was approved at the meeting, and it keeps that, the, both positions on par as they were before. Both positions were at this, in the same range prior to this proposal, and it keeps that on par.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or motions from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to Ms., to Denise, I think we always ask, how many more times will we see any, do you foresee, I know you're supposed to be retired at this point, but do you foresee any more in the future? You know, I know we ask this question every time, and I know probably from the last, it seems like every meeting we've had, an increase. And I fully, you know, I love the backup, I love the information, but I think as, it's growing, you know, repetitive in nature rather than just kind of throwing a whole bunch at us. Is there any others that are coming down the pipeline?
Well, as you know, there is the one that was, that was moved to committee, committee of the whole. And as it stands right now, not that I know of, there's none coming, there's none that, there's no other requests that have been presented to the commission, Civil Service Commission, okay? I will also explain that while it may seem like a comprehensive salary survey is a great idea, in order, it costs a lot of money to do that. It's anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to do that. The city hasn't been in a position, I've spoken to my commission on several occasions requesting something along those lines so that you can look at the whole picture, and they haven't felt that, that it was the right time to spend that kind of money to do that. So, by doing it the way that we have been, it is more cost-effective, and it gives us, we're doing this in a way that as these positions are, people retire from them, or people leave, or we need to replace people, then this is already set up. So, we are trying to stay ahead of it as best we can, but in order to do a big comprehensive salary study, it is very expensive and time-consuming. And the other fact is, when you do that, people expect change. People expect more, so.
No, thank you for that. And like I said, you know, I know that there's a lot of work that goes into it, and from the salary increases and the data that's obviously transparent in different communities, the backup that you guys present is, is top-notch. This is something that, you know, I think every meeting I, I say the same thing, that we need to be competitive. It helps you guys out, obviously, and we want to be a destination employer. So, with that, I just wanted to see if there, are we going to have more and more? I, I remember this position being a part of waiting on the Housing Commission, too. So, with that, I would be happy to offer an approving for regular, if I may.
We have an approving for the regular agenda. Council, comments, questions? Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. To Mrs. Mayor, can you explain the step process when, when one of these positions, I believe this should be approved? So, when this, when a department head receives a, this, this new salary adjustment, do their, does their step change as well? Do they go down a step to, or do they move up a certain percentage to, to meet that next closest step?
That depends on what their current step is. It's very rarely, if ever, a step down. It could be a lower step, but what we do is we look at what is the closest salary band that is four percent above what they're making.
Four percent is the limit?
Yes, four percent, approximately. It's never, exactly, but it, it's approximately four percent, and we find that number that's closest to that, and that would become their new step. So, they don't go from step five to step five or step four to step four because that would be a very large increase. But that also provides to them additional steps that if they were at step five, they didn't have any further steps.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Mr. Barr?
Denise, looking at the backup, and thank you for sending that over, thanks to the administration for sending that over. There are a number of cities on here, Canton, Farmington, Nos Novi, and Troy, that all responded, but the salary information says N A. Can you just explain why that is?
They either, they either do not have that classification, which is normally the case.
Okay.
Let me take, just take a quick look here. Yes, Canton Township does not have that position. Farmington Hills does not have that position, so if they don't have that position, it's not, they can't quote us.
Okay. And I'm fine with the approving for regular. However, I do want to clarify, Councilwoman McIntyre had asked on the previous item for some information. Councilwoman McIntyre, were you asking for that information just for the fire chief and the W chief, or were you asking that for all?
For, for that item, if I may, Mr. Jolly?
Yes, ma'am.
For that item, I was just asking for the comparison or the, only for the police and, and the fire for matters of comparing what I think are two very similar positions for similar departments, understanding their functions are different, but.
And I think what you were asking for, okay, so I, I guess what I'm suggesting, I'm fine with this being approving for regular. I would appreciate seeing though what Councilwoman McIntyre asks for, for, for our directors, just, just a table summary, similar to what you've done here, but just of, all in one here, but just of, all in one place, what salaries are, the car, the whole compensation level of each of our directors, just in one place, would just be helpful for this and the other topic that you referenced. So I guess I would ask the administration if it'd be possible to provide that for us prior to the next regular meeting.
When you say entire compensation package, can you?
Yeah, I should clarify that, shouldn't I? I guess I, just, I'd like to see a compensation comparison in one place of all of our directors, and just so we can get a sense of how they line up. I think, I'm assuming you have it, because I think as part of the study that you've done here, it's, you have that information. The material that had been provided to us said that you had, you know, undergone a comprehensive look to see what was, you know, out of, not in sync with what the market was demanding. These were the three positions, this and the previous two, that you felt needed to be adjusted, and I guess I'd just like to see more of that information, it'd be helpful for us.
So so far, I know you want to see the salary and the car allowance for the vehicle situation?
Yeah, the car policy, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Because everybody's vacation's a little different.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I think just those two things.
Okay.
And like I said, it's not just for this item, and I think that'll be instructive for some of the other things that we're talking about, too, so.
Ms. McIntyre?
I just wanted to clarify, and I just may need to go to the mayor, Mr. Jolly, or to someone from the mayor's office. None of these increases that have come to us in the last two months were in the budget, right? These, the salaries that are being proposed were not reflected in the budget that was approved in November.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Jolly, I guess I have a question for the administration.
Will you have the floor?
Well, and that is why, why when we approved a budget in November, and I understand that the reasoning for some of these was that the Conference of Western Wayne had not published their schedule, but we just approved a budget with department had salaries in it. And I think this is the fourth, this is the fourth?
Third, I think. Whatever.
Whatever. Third or fourth that's come to us since the, since the budget was approved with department had salaries. So, and that's really not directed at you, Ms. Mayor, it's really a kind of a policy question regarding the budget, and why these are happening right after we approved the budget, so, thanks. So I'm fine with it being on regular.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
No other comment from the council? Any audience communication? Seeing none from either, we will move on to item number six, a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase Rainbird Variable Speed Pump Station from Seoul Authorized Dealer. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for replacement of the Fox Creek Pump Station. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. Council President, you did a wonderful job explaining that. We are looking forward to purchase a Rainbird pump station for our Fox Creek Golf Course. This is a Seoul Source, who are asking to waive the formal bidding process. Background information was provided for council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the subject.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Davis, the only question I do have is, it looks like the original budgeted amount was close to eighty. You're asking for ninety, just reason why?
It was more expensive than we anticipated it was going to be.
That's what I figured it was.
That's the short and simple answer for you.
And I do appreciate the backup, you know, Rainbird and the Seoul Source. With that, all the paperwork's, that answers my questions. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Any other comment from the council? Seeing none, audience communication? Seeing none, you have an approving for consent on January nineteenth.
Thank you very much.
We will move to item number seven, request to consider naming the Dog Park at Bicentennial Park as Supers Dog Park, coming to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation in honor of Super Chilani. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly. This is, we're asking for council to concur in this proposed naming of the Bicentennial Dog Park to Supers Dog Park from the Parks and Recreation Commission. This comes to us really from Tom Chilani and the work he's done, and all the great things he's done in our community. As council knows, Mr. Chilani actually was responsible for a large donation to our Ben Chilani Play Area, in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, to redo that playscape there that's going to be done this coming summer, maybe early fall, depending on how supply chain issues go. Tom has been a pillar of our community, and been intimately involved in projects ranging from St. Mary's all throughout the community, and we think this is a good honor for him. Again, the Bicentennial Park has not been named, the Dog Park has never been named, this is asking to name it for the first time, and again, this did pass through the Parks and Recreation Commission, was included just in the, I'm not sure if it was included in the packet, but we had gone through facility naming guidelines a few years ago, when we had this issue come before us with regards to the Harry Tadagen naming, and what we did with Harry Tadagen Park and Nature Preserve. So if we do look at that, this does follow civic or charitable organization definition, and I think this is a good, good idea for this site. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. So I think this is a great idea, when you look at what that family has done for our community, but not only the city of Livonia, but surrounding communities, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, have been raised through the different charitable organizations and the philanthropic work they do. Looking at the packet, to your, to your point, Mr. Davis, I mean, we talk about naming parks and other recreational areas, this meets the definition, and I'm a dog guy, so it's cool to see a dog park with a name, but not only just a name, but a name that's done so much, and is doing so much for our community now, and I believe will continue to do good things for our city moving forward and other surrounding communities. With that being said, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Counsel? Ms. McIntyre?
It meets the, it meets the threshold, or the guidance, which is intended to be an art, not a science.
Correct.
Has Mr. Chilani, is there been any conversations between the city and Mr. Chilani about his interest in his business in the marijuana field? You know, his family's very, very active, has a large business, and I know he's interested in retail distribution.
Councilwoman McIntyre, not with the Parks and Recreation Department, we haven't had any of those conversations with regards to his retail businesses or his other interests. Other than in passing, I know he owns a winery out in California. That sounds nice, for sure.
I know about the winery, too, but his family has a rather large scale marijuana operation.
He has not brought that up with the department.
I guess I'd like to ask, Mr. Chair, that, I'd like this placed on the regular, and any response from the administration, if there's been discussions with Mr. Chilani about his interest in the marijuana business in the city of Livonia.
Okay, so this will be on the regular for January nineteenth? I think Mr. Donavich, then Mr. Barr?
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Ted.
As the council member that made the approving, I'm not sure what his personal businesses, legal businesses have to do with a dog park, but I'd just like to clarify, I think that the family has done a lot of great work for our community, and in precedent of naming parks and other facilities in the past, people, organizations, et cetera, that do great work for the community, above and beyond work for the community, this is a normal process. So I'm not necessarily sure what's a legal, private business has to do with that, but I naturally respect my colleagues on council to go to regular meeting. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barr?
Ted, is there, so Supers Dog Park, we understand where that comes from, but five, ten years from now, when somebody walks up and sees Supers Dog Park, you anticipate having any kind of signage or recognition there? What do you have in mind for that?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Councilman Barr. I mean, I think we will put up some sort of plaque or acknowledgement, or some bio of Super, and his, you know, his lineage, if you will, or his relationship with Tom. We'll come up with a picture and something nice to say on a, on a sign there at the dog park to commemorate it.
Yeah, okay, and I certainly appreciate and respect the involvement Mr. Chilani's had in the city, through St. Mary's Hospital, and certainly the park, and other things. So I don't begrudge the request, and it does meet, you know, I appreciate whoever included this in our packet, being able to review our guidelines for this, it does fit within that. It just strikes me as odd, for all the things, like, for all the things he's been involved in, that this is where the naming would go, and I'm not proposing anything here, but, you know, just to kind of make my point, is why this seems odd, is like, that dog park was, if I recall correctly, one of the signature accomplishments under the previous administration, you know, like, if we were, I'm not proposing this necessarily, but like, naming it after, after former mayor Wright or something like that, like, would make sense, but I'm struggling with, okay, so this guy does a lot of work in our community, and so we're gonna name the dog park after his dog, just, I'm glad it's on the regular, I'd like a little more time to reflect on this. Again, certainly appreciate what Mr. Chilani's done, and probably belabored this enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Seeing no other comments from the council, no audience communication, we have a regular motion approving on January nineteenth. We'll move to item eight, award of contract from the Department of Parks and Recreation for senior fitness passport memberships to the Jack E. Kirksey Recreation Center. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Councilman, Council President Jolly. This is, again, another senior Medicaid membership offering. There are so many of these right now, Silver Sneakers, of course, being the most popular one, and the one everyone has heard of, because of the brand name. Council recently approved Peer Fit with another provider. This is, again, through Optum Healthcare Solutions. It's called a senior fitness passport membership. This will follow the same guidelines as our two existing contracts do, offering matinee memberships free of charge. We are, this one has a higher reimbursement rate, it is per visit, three dollars and twenty cents per visit, for a maximum payout of thirty-two dollars a month, based, of course, on a number of times a person visits in a particular month. This is a good deal for us, considering our current matinee membership is nineteen dollars per month. So again, this is open to residents and non-residents, we have already done this with Silver Sneakers, we have already done this with Peer Fit, we are asking council to approve the contract for Optum Healthcare Solutions to offer the senior fitness passport. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Counsel? Can I have a motion? Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer an approving for consent, if there's no objections.
Okay, seeing no other comment from the council, no audience communication, we have an approval for consent on January nineteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item number nine, request to waive the formal bidding process and approve a contract with Allied Inc. from the Department of Public Works to perform the replacement of the hydraulic power unit for hoists number one and number two in the fleet maintenance garage. Sir?
Good evening, council, and congratulations to our new members on council, as well as our new council president. Happy New Year, everyone. So this item before you, just a little background on why we're taking this request as a approval, waiving the bidding process. So in early twenty twenty, the department had solicited bids to replace basically the sister unit of this pump, which powers hoist number three and four in the fleet garage. The field of qualified contractors for this type of work is very limited in the area, and only two bidders had responded back in twenty twenty. The project was awarded to a contractor that were found to be very non-responsive, they failed to complete the work, and the award was eventually rescinded and given to the second low bidder after a very arduous process. Allied Incorporated at that time came in and completed the work quickly, and to the satisfaction of the department, given their past performance, or the past performance issues with the other qualified contractor that would likely bid on this project here in the area, we recommend that this project be awarded to Allied. So in, specific to the project, the project includes replacing the unit itself, the pump unit, power unit is forty-plus years old that's being replaced. Like I said, it's a sister unit to the one right next to it that powers two other hoists, three and four, this one powers hoist one and two. The replacement of this power unit is a safety concern due to leaking fluids from the box, as well as excessive noise that's caused during its motor operation, which can be an issue when trying to give direction, and you're working side by side with someone else in the shop, and having that loud motor running right next to you. Therefore, it's our recommendation that council proceed to award a contract to Allied Inc. in the amount of sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars, to provide all labor materials and labor and materials necessary to perform the replacement of this hydraulic power unit, and authorize the expenditure in that same amount from budgeted funds. And lastly, waive the formal bidding process in accordance with city ordinances, since we believe there would be no advantage to the city resulting from a competitive bidding process in this situation.
Thank you, sir, counsel. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank you guys for the detail in the backup. Honestly, I remember, as much as I hate waiving the formal bidding process, I remember this distinctly before us, I think, last year, and with the non-responsive. And I'm actually familiar with Allied in this industry, and they're very good, so I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent, if there are no objections.
Okay, we have an approving for consent. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, no audience communication, we have an approving for consent on January nineteenth, and that concludes the agenda items for tonight. I will go back to council for any council communications. Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. While Mr. Rushell is here, I just wanted to commend him and his department's work on the Middle Belt and School Craft Construction. I know we recently had a meeting talking about Great Lakes Water Authority and the closures, and a lot of the inconveniences to businesses and to residents alike, and your department worked really hard, and so far, it's been opened up, and it's been flowing a lot better. So thank you for your work, and anyone back in your department that's worked on that, thank them as well. Thank you, Mr. Rushell.
Thank you, sir. No other comments from the council, there is no audience to comment. With that, we will wish you good night, Livonia, stay well.